And welcome everyone to our Monterey City Council meeting of March 2 evening only. Praise the powers that be. And before we get started, I'm going to ask our very helpful Assistant City Manager Nat Roger Nasatera to explain to folks how they can participate in our meeting as our wonderful public. So Nat, it's all yours, please.
Thank you, Mayor Roberson. There are two ways to participate in our city council meetings. One is to join directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device. And the second method is to join by calling directly into the meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom using your computer, smartphone, or telephone, you can use the link or the phone number on the agenda that's located at icentermontreal.org. Since the meeting is already started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, please dial toll free 833-568-8864. Then you'll enter the meeting ID, which is 1607729333 pound. And if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound one more time. Detailed instructions on how to use Zoom is available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand using the raise hand button that's on the bottom of your screen. If you've dialed in by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and then unmute yourself by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. I'll be calling on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. We'll have a time limit for today's meeting and we'll be showing a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. This meeting is also being streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10 second delay and also on Comcast Channel 25, which you should know will have a delay of about 90 seconds. As always, we look forward to receiving public comment from everyone tonight. And back to Mayor Roberson.
Yes, okay, I just got another sign on my computer to launch the meeting and obviously it's been launched. So we'll call our meeting to order and would ask our very high-class city clerk Clementine to introduce her caring city council, please.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Roberson.
And I'm here as well. In a moment, you will see the flag over Colton Hall on your screen. And as soon as we're ready, I'll invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. As soon as we're ready, we'll wait a moment. There it is. All right. So we'll ask everyone to please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you so much. That's a, I really enjoy doing that. And as an elementary school teacher, that's something we did every day to start our day. So next is recognition of the American Red Cross Month. I'm going to ask our very honest city manager, did you have a brief staff presentation on this? I noticed that our good friend Jay had prepared a little report. So Hans, are you ready to go with that? Or otherwise, I'd be happy to read the proclamation.
Mr. Mayor, we have Lee from the American Red Cross here with us and Lee is prepared to give us a brief presentation. And with that, I punt over to Lee Hettman.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. And hello, Lee, welcome. Unmute yourself, Lee. There you go.
Oh, there we go. Now I'm unneeded there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks. Well, thank you so much, Mayor and all city council members for this proclamation and the recognition that for on behalf of all of our volunteers, I only wish that we could all be together in person. I could thank you personally. You know, speaking of being together in person, I was reflecting earlier today that at just about the same time last year, we were in person in chambers accepting this proclamation. And I remember that we had a nice chat about the history of the proclamation that President Roosevelt had signed that back in during World War II. And we talked about the fact that a few of us in the conversation, their our fathers were in World War II. So it was a real nice.
Yes.
A real nice chat. And so I'm thinking that it must have been just about this time last year when all of you, when the city council went to virtual meetings. That must have been among the latter of the in-person meetings, I'm guessing, back last March. So let me just tell you a little bit about the Red Cross's activities during the year 2020. An interesting little thing that I happened to read today was that in 2020, our country had the most billion dollar, that's with a B, billion dollar disasters in any year in its history. So of course, we were very busy responding to those sorts of events. And listen, the other side of the coin is that Americans really responded, both with dollars, of course, and donations. But also there were 70,000 new, entirely new volunteers who joined the ranks of Red Cross last year in 2020 to help respond to those, to those many disasters. And of course, quite aside from those, those billion dollar disasters nationally, we had more, way more than our share of disasters here locally in our region. Of course, the horrible wildfires last year and now more recently, the concerns about mud flows in the burn scar areas and so forth. And you know, we talk pretty regularly at our local chapter that although responding to all of the disasters throughout the country and throughout the world are meaningful to us, somehow it is just somehow more meaningful and more heartfelt when we're responding literally and figuratively to our own neighbors when they're in need. So once again, I can't thank you enough on behalf of all of our volunteers for this recognition and for the proclamation. We appreciate it hugely.
Oh, thank you, Lee. And first of all, let me correct what I said. Eric Palmer has been extraordinarily helpful in getting our proclamation together and getting you on our agenda.
Your staff is very efficient. They, they are, they're, they're so good in all of the planning and all the scheduling of this. I can't speak highly enough of them.
Yes, absolutely. And, and so the proclamation summarizes that myself, this is the mayor, our city council and our citizens proclaim the month of March 2021 as American Red Cross Month. And we encourage all Americans to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. And we'll get the proclamation to you. I have a question, Lee, and that is, I noticed in your remarks that you provided for Eric and Eric's really good report about the 13 blood drives at the Alastero Park Center and nearly 500 units of blood. Can you tell the, anyone who's watching, is it safe to give blood? What are, what are the protocols? Just to assure folks, because I'm sure the need is as great as ever. Could you comment on that, please?
Sure. The need is as great as ever. And I appreciate you asking that. Yes, we're, we're especially careful in the blood drives there. Any person who comes to give blood will be first met by what's known as a blood donor ambassador. They'll be asked in terms of their present health situation, though their temperature will be taken and so forth and so on. So we're extraordinarily careful. And then yes, people can be assured that it's safe to give blood at this time. And as you point out, that the need is as great as ever.
Yes. And as sort of anyone who's ever down by Lake Alastero, Dennis, the Menace Park, which we hopefully we will be open one of these days, you'll see a large, I think it's a truck versus a trailer and you'll see see it there. And are reservations necessary to give blood? How would someone do that, Lee?
Well, reservations are typically taken. Whether one is strictly necessary to any given blood drive, I'm afraid I can't tell you right now. I'd be happy to get that information and get, get you an answer on that.
Yeah, that would be great. We can pass it on in the outstanding daily update that Lori Welg and her department puts together. We can certainly let people know that.
Yes, reservations can be made. I'm just not prepared to say that each and every blood drive, it's, it's a strict necessity to have one.
Yes, understood. No, I'm great. Well, again, thank you for, for joining us and I was very pleased to hear that you've got more volunteers than ever. I think one of the things, if there are any positive side effects to this whole shelter in place and pandemic is we're finding out how much, how giving everybody is in our community.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, thank you again to all of you.
All right, our pleasure. You're welcome to hang around or if you wanted to watch cable news, we understand. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Goodbye.
All right. Public comments, and that would be anything not on the agenda. It's also a good time if you wanted to make any remarks about our closed session items, this would be a good time to do that as well. And so the public comments are within the jurisdiction of Monterey. If a short answer would be appropriate, we can do that. Otherwise, by the state Brown Act, we really can't get into a discussion or explanation because things have to be on the agenda for transparency. So with that, we're going to ask now, we have a three-minute limit. And I'm not leaving. I have to go plug in this laptop. So if you see me just stop my video for a minute, I'll be right back while I grab the charger.
Okay, super. Well, go ahead and take public comment here. And we've got a few raised hands. Just a reminder to please raise your virtual hand if you like to speak. And the first caller will be Gene Rash. Hi, Gene, welcome to the Monterey City Council meeting tonight. If you could click unmute, we'll be able to hear you. Gene, if you're there, I don't know if you can see there is unmute button, then we'll be able to take your, your comment. If not, we'll have to move on to our next caller. Okay, I think we're going to go ahead and move to the next caller until Gene can connect with us here. So I will go ahead and oh, let's see, no. Okay, we'll go to 650 area code, 366 are the last three digits. And if you could please unmute yourself by dialing star six. There we go. Welcome.
Hi, this is Gene Rash.
Oh.
So Gene Rash.
You called in.
City, yes, from the city of Monterey with Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association. Where I'm calling in to ask that we reprioritize the wireless and encroachment ordinances that everyone worked on so long and hard through 2019 and into 2020. We're very close to having it finished. Volunteers put in 100 hours in a range of 100 hours. People like me who tried to keep up and participate and, and watch and ask questions and contribute gave many hours. That doesn't even touch what the staff did. Kim Cole did so much. Our own attorney was there constantly. Steve Witry contributed so much. And then we hired with our city funds the attorney Van Etten, who's the specialist in telecommunications law. And he was there for hours and hours. And I'm sure he, he did research that he billed for. It's just a shame to let that go. We need those ordinances in place. There will be cell tower applications. We have to be ready and I hope reprioritize it to the, back to the top of the list. And thank you all for your good work. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Jane. Okay, we will go on to our next caller. That's Pat Venza. Hi, Pat. There we go.
Hi, Pat Venza, city of Monterey, also a member of the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association. And I'm also calling about the wireless ordinance. I want to make it a reminder that it's been over four or five years ago before this, when this subject started. And that that city council chamber, which we hope to all be back in one day, was overflowing with citizen participation on how important this subject was to so many people. The wireless ordinance subcommittee was formed. Those participants spent hundreds of hours participating, reading, we getting references on, on that wireless ordinance. And it's been over a year and a quarter since they made their final approval on it. I want to remind also somewhere in the midst of all of that, over a year and a quarter ago, the mayor was very discouraged about the hundreds of thousands of dollars that the consultant fees were and how much this, this process of getting the wireless ordinance was costing. Well, it's one thing for it to cost, it's another thing for us to waste it. And that appears to be what is happening. Because all that time from that consultant and the money and the time that the staff did and volunteers has now been sitting for over a year and a quarter with nothing done. I understand that it's item number 60 on the priority list. And that really bothers me. There's always going to be new priorities. And are they always going to be shoved to the bottom as a new one comes along? And can we never see completion of something? I just feel that I'm not, you know, totally in the loop as to what it's going to take to get this done. But the idea that it hasn't gone before the planning commission and then to on to you folks for approval. When hundreds of thousands of dollars has been spent is a total waste of our taxpayer money and the funds that are so limited to the city. So please, let's see this thing get done and finalized. I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Pat, for calling in. We're going to take our next caller and the last three digits of their phone number is 452 452. And we ask that you please, on your keypad, dial star six to unmute yourself. Since you're calling in by telephone. If you please again dial star six to unmute yourself and we can hear you. Okay, we're, we're not hearing this individual who's called in by telephone. Well, we always remind people to please you, you must not only dial star nine to raise your hand, but star six to unmute. And if you don't dial star six, we aren't able to hear you. So we won't be able to take your public comment. We have another caller here. Last three digits, 151. 151, if you could please dial star six to unmute. Well, then take your public comment. 151. There we go.
Hi, this is Kami Jennings. I live in the city of Monterey. And I'm calling because again, I'd like to find out when and/or if there's any timetable with regard to opening the sports center pool for people that can't exercise anywhere but the pool.
Okay, thank you for your public comment. We, unfortunately, there's no dialogue between staff and, and questions from the public there. We take all the comments and we're happy to follow up with you. If you'd like to email us at suggest@monterey.org. We can, as staff, respond to your inquiries or your questions.
Okay.
Thank you for your comment. Yep, thanks so much.
On that, before we go on, could you remind folks about turning down the volume of their computer or TV or whatever before they speak? Because we, it makes it harder for us to hear them.
That's, that's a good reminder. Thank you, Councilmember Hoffa. Yes, reminder to those, because of feedback, we do ask that, that you turn off your speakers or television sets so we don't hear that feedback. Okay, we're going to go to 452. Again, please dial star six to unmute yourself and we'll take your public comment. And if not, we will have to move on. 452.
Hi, this is Kayla. Hi, this is Kayla Fossum, president of Villa Del Monte Neighborhood Association. And I just wanted to let you know that you haven't heard from me from a while, but I watch you regularly. And we are involved in our neighborhood. We monitor all the financial discussions especially. We have participated in all the feedback for the cannabis businesses that's been ongoing. And I just wanted to let you know that we are involved, we're watching, we appreciate all you've been doing. The council and the staff as we enter this ominous one-year annual anniversary, horrible anniversary of the shutdown due to the pandemic. Having said that, I also want to touch upon the NCIP. I know that, you know, of course, because of budgetary considerations, you had to pull back all of the funds from the already approved projects and funded projects. But I also heard some, some chatter at the last city council meeting that you were going to start up the NCIP process again this year, which I assume is this April. We have been in contact in my neighborhood with Tom Hardy. And he seemed a little unsure as to when that was going to start. And it's my understanding that all the prior projects that were funded and approved will not have to go through the application process again. So I just want to encourage you. I know budgetary is primary consideration. But I think the NCIP is important and I want to encourage city council to stay on top of that and get back into the water as soon as possible on, on those projects. Thank you very much.
Great. Always great hearing from you, Kayla. Thank you so much. All right. Yep. Thank you. And that concludes public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda.
Okay, now would you repeat the easy email address? Because obviously we have Tammy's and Jean's and Pat's and Kayla's emails, but folks who want to have questions such as the really good ones that we had just now. Once again.
Yes. Are any questions, comments, feedback to the city can be sent to suggest, S U G G E S T at monterey.org.
Okay, that's really easy. And what happens then is once it comes into suggest@monterey.org, it will be channeled to the staff person. And I can guarantee you, you will get an answer. And I know Monterey Sports Center, as we know, everything's up in the air. We're still in purple tears, red tears, school reopenings. Texas and Mississippi just opened up their entire state and eliminated their mask mandates. I don't think that's going to happen here in California. So you've got new uh J and J uh vaccination and they're going to partner with Merck, which is a competitive drug company, and they're going to make J and Js together. So there's so many things going on. And I know I hear a lot of questions about the Monterey Sports Center. So we'll get to that to you. And also NCIP, I know we've had other NCIP members and public asking, what is the status of that? What are we looking like like going forward? So we'll get those answers for you as well as we'll talk about the timing for wireless. So thanks all our good friends, our our loyal followers for your suggestions. On consent items, uh, any member of the public that we know now who wants to pull a consent item?
Not that we're aware of, and no one has their hands raised to do so.
Council, want to pull or comment on anything?
Nope.
Okay, then I'll just make a motion to approve the consent.
Second.
All right, we had a motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
And Mayor Robertson.
Yes, for me as well. Council comments, let's start with Dan, uh, councilmember Dan. Anything for us this evening, meetings you've been to or any thoughts?
I do. I have a couple. Um, I I did attend the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association meeting last night. And uh, there were several subjects, as you already heard from a a couple of the members tonight. Uh, one was litter on the highways and and they they discussed a community service project uh for some of the um, some of the areas in the city or in their neighborhood. Uh, the second is uh, they they talked with great length about the homeless encampments along the Don Davy Park and some of their concerns. And they also mentioned about um, a a we did discuss this a year ago before COVID, a year, a citywide plan for homeless. Um, and um, and I think that Alan brought up about putting together an ad hoc committee um, on homelessness in the city of Monterey. So um, they they were wondering where we were on that particular uh item. And then the last one was we already talked about, or they already talked about, was the wireless ordinance. And uh, where we are in in putting it um, to a vote or or at least getting it on the agenda. Uh, the second item I have is I am a board member of the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. And um, I don't know if you realize this, but for the last uh 10 months, the Last Chance Mercantile, which um, people bring out usable items and then they're resell, resold uh to the public. It's been closed for about 10 months. And um, one of the reasons obviously is for COVID reasons. But uh, the uh, the district's also decided because it is run out of loss that they've taken out a um, some requests for um, moving that to a contracting services of operation. Uh, we do have two that have applied um, or have responded to the RFP. And um, in the next month or two, we're going to make a decision on whether we're going to keep that in-house or um, go ahead and put it out to um, to operational services. So it it's what i- if anybody's been out to the the landfill, you know that Last Chance Mercantile is one of the one of the better operations out there. And so we hope to reopen uh pretty soon. So those are the two items that I have. Uh, thanks.
And thanks for your service on their board, too. Uh, councilmember Alan, council comments?
I I have no comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Ed?
Yeah, thank you quite. You know, I'll mention, uh, keep it brief, is the Transportation Authority of Monterey County each year has what's called Legislative Day. Last year, we traveled to Sacramento with the contingency from Monterey County. And we joined together with Santa Cruz County Transportation and San Luis Obispo as well to advocate for upcoming legislation and put in our pitch for things like Highway one, one fifty-six, uh, continuing to keep our roads maintained and um, asking for special legislation to be crafted uh for the upcoming years. So because this year, we're not quite out of COVID, we can't go back up to the Capitol. Uh, but we're going to replicate that with all the partners and um, our local representatives. Uh, our new senator, March 12th, so looking forward to that planning session this week. And then next week, we'll we'll launch with a very large uh group, very similar to what we're doing tonight and conduct the business to advocate for our region in central California. The other thing I think we've all heard some of the news about Caltrans on Highway one. So um, through TAMZI, we've heard from the local district office of Caltrans that uh, exciting uh timeline for seeing Highway one open. So I think that's been in the Herald in some um fairly wide education. So just wanted to thank Caltrans for being such a efficiently run outfits. And they are aware of how high of a priority Highway one is. And so the timeline for that is actually much better than we thought. So we're hoping to see that completed by the beginning of the summer. So on the the front of transportation, things were all good. And uh, that's about all I have.
Good. And thank you for serving on that committee. Councilmember Tyler?
And I'll pass for today.
Okay, uh, I would just want to update you on um, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District meeting that we had last Thursday. I am the mayor's representative. It's again, it's my hope that we can rotate that seat every couple of years. So all of the Monterey Peninsula mayors get an opportunity to serve and represent everyone. Uh, just quick highlights. Uh, one of the uh water sources, as we know, is ASR. I'm going to try to keep all of my acronyms straight. Aquifer Storage Recovery, Aquifer. I think I got it. Anyway, that's excess river water. The the CalM is allowed to take uh running water out of the river. But because of the lack of the rain, the average is about a thousand acre feet a year. So far, sixty-six acre feet. And unless we have some really serious rains, that's going to be a very limited part. However, the heavy rains that we did have did create about three years of reserve in the aquifer, which is kind of interesting. Secondly, I don't know if you all knew, it was in the paper, but it was discussed at our meeting that the California State Water Resources Control Board has a CDO, a cease and desist order. And in October of last year, just three or four months ago, they actually penalized CalM a thousand acre feet for um, not making what they thought sufficient progress on a new water source. The Monterey Water, uh, the management district did write a letter and said to the state board, hey, folks, remember if things were out of our control and CalM's control, we ask that you give us relief. And you've got the D-SAL plant, which is currently held up at the Coastal Commission. You have Monterey One Water, which is going to be looking again at the EIR for possible expansion to Pure Water Monterey. And uh lawsuits with the city of Marina. So the Pebble Beach Company, as well as the Water Management District, did write a letter to the state board and said, hey, we want some relief. We'd love to talk to you. Fortunately, because of the conservation efforts of all of the water users in the district, that thousand acre feet cut isn't really going to be felt. However, there's another one due this year at the end of the year. So again, these things that are out of our control. So the chair of the water board asked that the mayors sign a letter and saying, we would love to have a hearing and explain the situation to you and and try to get some relief on the CDO. Third, AMBA came out with its regional growth forecast 2022, which and it did include Rena housing numbers. And the analysis by the general manager of the water district said that either the D-SAL plant or the expansion to the wastewater recycling, both would meet the needs up until the year 2045 for water on the peninsula. And then lastly, the water district has submitted an application to Lafco. And it's a very tough to um, technical application in that it's it has to do with Measure J and public ownership of the water system. So Lafco has to approve the latent powers of the water district to be a water distributor. So it was just a real quick report, but it's hundreds of pages long. So that's where the whole public ownership is now. It's going to go to Lafco. And Lafco has to make a governmental technical decision to allow the district to exercise its latent powers. Because right now, obviously, CalM's delivering the water. So and my other uh council comment has to do with Lauren Lai, who this is her last meeting with the city of Monterey. I I wish I could say to Lauren, there she is. It's not your last council meeting, Lauren. And so I said, all right. I I went and took a look at my adjective list and I had a whole bunch of C adjectives for you. And first of all, is competent. And so we're we're, you're the best conscientious, courteous, congenial, concise. Now, that might sound like what? A a finance director is concise? Well, all of the work that she's done is very complex. Hey, there's another C, but that's a noun. No, complex can be either one. But Lauren has a really good way of explaining difficult esoteric finances in that everyone understands, including senior millennials. And so I was at a Kona meeting, just what gee, you know what? It's so odd because we've been sheltering in place so long. I was thinking, we were just at a at a Kona Casanova Oakno neighborhood meeting recently, and it seems like it. And Lauren was there along with um Hans, our city manager, explaining the budget. And Lauren creates a lot of confidence in people when she explains things to them. They say, oh, I get it. And and so that's a really good attribute, because I was talking to them about Measure G and Measure Y and Measure S. And they're peppering me with questions. And then Lauren says, well, this is the way it works. They all said, oh, okay. So next time she always goes first. I know she's very collaborative, been a really good part of our city executive team, very appreciated by all of the people she works with. And I think about all of the challenges. I'm sure when she came to the city of Monterey, she hadn't expected a pandemic, closures, budget crisis. Then she helped us through Measure Gs and Measure S and Measure Ys. And I know, like all of us, she was heartbroken when we had to do layoffs because they're people that we all knew. And and so as she goes on to her new assignment, you're much appreciated, much valued and commendable. So we're going to miss you. You always have a home here. So city manager?
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all those comments.
You're welcome, Lauren. It's true.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, unfortunately, Lauren will uh leave us by the end of the week and will start a new career in a different larger city than the city of Monterey. Uh, Lauren was um, actually the first hire that that I was allowed by the city council to do. Um, I was still interim city manager, but I told you in my one-on-ones, there's an awesome finance director that has applied. Um, I'm sure whoever you pick as city manager will have a great asset, a great trustful advisor uh at his at his or her side. And uh, you all said, well, go, go hire, hire that person, uh, bring, bring that person on staff. And I uh, I I was very grateful that you allowed me to do that, even though we we still didn't know who would be the new city manager. But I think in the end, it turned out all right that that Lauren was uh coming to the city of Monterey. And uh, of course, we all uh are going to miss Lauren. And uh, I know wherever she goes, uh, she will be a huge success in that city as well. So uh, again, officially also for me, my my gratitude to Lauren and the excellent work she did for the city of Monterey. And as the mayor said, as a finance director, you need to be able to explain complex circumstances. But you also need to um, have a credibility, Mr. Mayor. So that these were three Cs and 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 six words so that give me, and they were all nouns. So um, with that, I I want to say thank you so much, Lauren. And and um, of course, uh, don't be a stranger. Other council comments that I wanted to share with you?
Any manager comments?
Uh, other city manager comments, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
But before you go to that, Hans, I want to invite any
Sure.
other staff members or council members who want to share any thoughts with Lauren, if you care to. Tyler, would you start us off, please?
Yeah, I I don't want to take too much time, but um, one of the things that that I did um, as a new council member is that I met with all the city executives. And my one-on-one um, with Lauren was uh, it just got me really excited, even more excited about um, becoming part of the the city of Monterey team. And and I was um, really happy with the the selection that that Hans made. I'm really glad that that recruitment happened. And then when I found out that she was leaving, it it broke my heart a little bit. So uh, Lauren, you are a rock star. And I hope we cross paths again. I wish you the best luck um, as you move forward in your career.
Councilmember Alan?
Yeah, um, I just want to really wish Lauren well. Um, I've had the chance in my eight years on council, three years on school board and I don't know, 25 years as a community college professor to work with a lot of different public sector finance directors. And you are clearly one of the top. You are really outstanding. Uh, you have integrity and you have knowledge. And um, you do just a really great job of explaining as others have said. So wish you really well and thank you for your service here.
And councilmember Ed?
Yeah, thank you very much, Lauren, for the time that you've spent in Monterey. And um, I I sort of felt like when you came to us, we stole you away from another employer. And we absolutely had the catch. Uh, and I still feel that way today. Um, I'm sorry to see you go to another location. Um, but I just want to say today is the a day that we want to recognize you. Say that, you know, we've we've traveled many roads these last couple of years and boy, what the experiences we've all had. And I can say that you have made those experiences. Um, especially the the financial cuts, the planning, the, you know, we we approve of a budget and then a couple of months later, we're we're undoing it. Uh, but I've never seen you at all lose your composure. And so even through these crazy times, you have been rock solid and and a very, very stabilizing factor on this council. So uh, tried to get as many Cs in there as I could, but you you have absolutely been our rock star. And uh, we really could not have done this as smooth without you. And I've also worked for many cities and had lots of um, finance directors come and go. And I've seen some in chaotic mode. I've never seen you cross that line. You've always been the epitome of a professional and a stabilizing factor, and you communicate so well. So you make it very, very easy for us to understand what the big plan is and really, really appreciate you. And uh, our door is always open for you to come and visit us and uh, don't be too far away from us, okay?
That's good. Now, I know councilmember Dan, who's had extensive, you were the financial officer for the city, excuse me, for uh, MPUSD. So probably if anyone knows the the heartbreaking challenges, it's you, Dan. So please, go ahead.
And one of the the toughest skills is one of your best skills, and that's explaining how a budget works. I know that that's really difficult for people to understand. And you do it very well. And that that, like I said, that's a, that's a tough skill to learn. And sometimes people don't even learn it. They don't learn it. But I I want to say that um, integrity and and hard work is always the the best, the best that the people can have. And and you have that, Lauren. So congratulations on where you're going to go. I'm sure that budget's going to be just a little bit I'm sure that budget's gonna be just a little bit bigger than the one down here. So you'll be counting a heck of a lot more beans than you were here, but, uh, I know that you'll do really well. And if you can't, come back and see us. We really appreciate all your hard work. Thank you. And and all the tough questions I gave you, too. You did a great job with those, by the way.
Right. There you go.
May I make just a few comments, Mayor? I just wanna say thank you so much for the honor and privilege of working here for the city, working for you as a council and this community and this organization. I think in government, which is something I'm so passionate about, our democracy, so much of it has is founded in leadership, right? Leadership in ourselves, in our teams, in our council, and in the people we serve, which is our community. One thing I've discovered here at the city of Monterey is leadership oozes out everywhere amongst all people. Not just the council, which has an exemplary, but the staff and the people we serve, the people that we collaborate with. And I will always take that with me because it's what we bring to our next organization and our next community, how we grow democracy in our country. And I wanna thank you for the opportunity to see that, to experience that, to elevate that, and know that I can share that as I move on my career. So I wanna show gratitude for what I've harvested here in my time in working. And it's profound to me. And I think it'll be really valuable that I get to continue to echo that in other communities as I move on. So thank you so much, truly.
All right, well, and we'll words, just, just, uh, just a small token of how we feel about your great work. So thank you. Uh, Hans, did you have more, uh, city manager reports?
No, Mr. Mayor, that 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 concludes my, my report.
That's a smart move. Nat, anybody in the public who wanted any indication to talk to us about closed session?
Let's see, uh, any opportunities for, there's only, uh, two members of the public here, uh, or a couple, uh, who've, uh, who are with us. And just raise your hand if you would like to speak on items for closed session. Otherwise, we'll go on to closed session. Doesn't look like we have any, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Thank you, public, for making this another great meeting. And we're adjourned to closed session. We'll see you shortly.